Can you guys see the screen now? Like if somebody can just say or they can just like type that would be fine for me. Yes, yes, you can. Great. Okay, guys, I welcome you all on the day eleven of mirror work. And the ones who have joined just now, a bomb, 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 welcome to all of you, to all of you. So the ones who have missed the ten days, I will be sending the playlist I have made separately on YouTube wherein all the recordings are gone. So from there you can go and see all the recordings and can follow up. And if there is any issue in between, just ping me. It can happen that I might reply a little late, but I will take care of each and every query that I have been dropped. Okay, so anybody would be interested in starting, I mean would be participating in reading it, anyone? Anybody would want to? Yes, now anything, alright, looks like. Nobody wants to, okay, so I'll take it forward, okay. So today we'll be talking about feeling good and releasing your anger. So even before we go forward and start today's session. Let's talk about something again very gendrake. Isn't it a very relaxing feeling when we release something which is not serving us for our highest good? How do you feel? Like let's say we are, we are upset with somebody or we were expecting someone to behave in a certain way with us and they did not do that and we felt bad about it. And what we are doing is we are just holding on to that feeling. We are, we are just holding on to it and somewhere or the other. All we are doing is we are spoiling ourselves by somebody else's behavior, somebody else's reaction, we are getting affected. Now when we are getting affected, our mind gets affected, our emotion gets disbalanced and our body also reacts in the same way. Just the way we spoke about in yesterday's class that how body also starts to respond when you are not behaving in a proper way with it. So in the same way today, what we, you want to read it, Ashman, she wants to read, okay, fine. Once I'm done with this, please go ahead and take it forward. Thank you so much for coming forward. Alright, so today we will be just talking about extremely gendrake thing which each one of us face it in our day to day life, that is holding on to something, any kind of attention, anger, not a very good feeling, not a very high vibrational feeling. And when we release it, how amazing we feel, we'll be talking about it and how to do it, we'll be talking about it. So yes, Ashman, please go ahead and take it forward, sweetheart.
Thank you so much. Am I audible?
Yeah, totally, totally, please.
Okay, okay, okay. Day eleven, feeling good, releasing your anger. Today you address anger, how to process it and release it before it makes you sick? And how to allow space inside for more positive emotions?
Yes.
How does it?
We, we'll take a pause here. So what we are going to discuss today is that I am not saying that you know having anger is a problem. No, we are human and we have all the emotions and that's completely fine to express each and every emotion. We will get angry, we'll be upset, we'll be happy, we'll be jealous and so on and so forth. We will have all the feelings. But now the catch is because we are trying to be a better version of us with each passing day. So all we will learn is how to process that emotion, any emotion. Like even if you know, like you will even come across people who are, when they are happy, they don't know how to respond. They don't know how to behave, they'll be like, you know, all cocooned even despite of being happy. And then a simple statement comes that, oh, this person is not expressive. But no, that's not the fact is they are not aware of how to process that emotion in the same way. Today when we are taking anger as the main emotion, what we are gonna learn is how to first of all, understand that, okay, fine, this is me getting angry, there is something that I need to understand, I need to process. And I need to channelize it in such a way that my body is not getting affected and my mind is not getting affected. And once we do that, how we succeed? The way we succeed is that we tend to make a place for more positivity in us. And the moment we are going to make that space for us, we are gonna grow. Because the higher vibration is coming to us. Okay, let's go forward, dear.
How does it feel? To be talking to yourself every day and telling yourself that you are loved. Love in your mirror, sorry, look in your mirror and take a few moments to congratulate yourself. You have looked deep into emotions and started to release the past. You are now learning to play a positive tape of affirmations in your mind. Celebrate the progress you have made so far. I celebrate you and your commitment to your mirror work.
Yes, in the past, in past ten days, we have worked on many aspects. We have worked on self-esteem, we have worked on how to, you know, make it easier first of all for us to say, I love you. It's so easy for us to go and say, I love you to every second person, maybe our kid, our husband, our parents, our pets. To everybody we can say, I love you. But actually, when you go and stand in front of the mirror, how difficult it was for us. You know, to stand in front of mirror and say, look at us and say, I love you. It was so awkward, like it has been awkward for, you know, all the people who have done till now, like, you know, the ten days journey that we have covered. But for the new ones, again, I will say, I will share the playlist, please guys, started from the very first day, I have explained it very, very well in the sessions, once you will play it and listen to it, you will actually feel that you are in the class. Do that and come here simultaneously, you will understand what I'm talking about and how you are actually feeling and releasing yourself and getting to know a better version of you and forgiving yourself and you start to love yourself and rediscover yourself. And that's what it is talking about that, you know, like I am honestly speaking, very happy for the people who, even now when you have joined it, I am very, very happy that you made a choice for yourself to look deep down and correct, correct yourself for more positivity. Okay, let's go forward.
While you were digging, while you were digging into your past and releasing your emotions, you may have discovered some angry feelings aimed at yourself or a particular event. So today I had, I would like to help you work in unforgiving and releasing any anger you might have. So that you can feel good about yourself. Anger is an honest emotion, but when it is not expressed or processed outwardly, it will be processed inwardly in the body and usually develops into a disease or dysfunction of some sort. We generally get angry about the same things over and over again. When we are angry, we feel we don't have a right to express it, so we swallow it. Which can cause resentment, bitterness or depression. So it's good to handle our anger and release it whenever it comes up.
Yes, so you will see it among your family members or even in yourself when you tend to just like, let's say a situation happened and you felt very angry about it. Now what happens when you, we are generally told that, you know, do not like, do not react at all, okay, that is what we are taught. Nobody is asking you and nobody will appreciate it and rather even I will say that, don't go and start shouting if something happens. Then a situation comes, try and process it by calming yourself down, rethink on the whole situation. Rethink on the whole situation and then again decide why this happened, what triggered me in that and this is the reason I need to correct in myself. That's the place wherein I am going wrong. You know, this is what happens when we get angry, when we get angry, what we do instantly, we start shouting and instead of actually focusing on what is the reason and how to solve it, we tend to just get angry. And in that angle, we are spoiling our own body. Sometimes we tend to have palpitation and some people will have like, you know, issues, the way we were discussing yesterday, that you know, you, you, you can tend to have something in your stomach or something or the other, our bodies tends to react. You know, kisi ka hatka apne laga, kisi ka pair ka apne laga, you know, we tend to go through all these kinds of, you know, situations and emotions. So why to even face that, why not to process it, process it in such a way that it is not harming us and not harming others? So this is what we will be learning. Okay, let's go forward.
If you feel like expressing yourself physically, then get some pillows and start hitting them. Don't be afraid to let your anger take its natural course.
Yeah, this is something that you have to do when you get angry. Take your space, you want to take it out, okay, fine, this is the method that they are talking about and that is called as pillow method. Wherein we actually take a cushion or a pillow and we hit that pillow. We hit that pillow and we take out all the emotions. And once you are done with that, you will feel as if, you know, a chunk of you has, you know, a chunk of you has come out, okay? Go forward.
You have already kept your feelings bottled up too long. There is no need to feel any guilt or shame about feeling angry. One of the best ways to deal with anger is to talk openly to the person you are angry with. When you feel like screaming at someone, then the anger has been building up for a long time. Often it is because you feel you cannot speak openly to the other person. So the second best way to let our anger out is to talk to the person in the mirror.
Yes, so now what it is, nobody is asking you to, you know, collect all the anger which you are having in you and keep getting, you know, collected because what happens? When the emotions are being collected and you are not releasing it. It, it makes a dark hole in us. Yeah, this happens that you start, like, you know, let's say a situation happened with our ex person and it kept on repeating, it kept on repeating, you will realize that after a certain time, even if that person said a a basic minor thing, you will tend to get annoyed. Now why you got annoyed so quickly? Because you have been accepting and swallowing that anger inside. Now the best way is that if you can go and talk it out to the person straight away, good enough. If not, if not, then go ahead and take the help of the mirror. Look into the mirror, imagine the person right in front of you into the mirror. And tell them everything that you want to tell it to the person. And in that process, forgive yourself and forgive that person also. And it will not happen just in one day, like let's say, I'm really upset with ex person because of X thing. And that, that issue is a big thing for us, you know, it, it is something wherein we are not readily, you know, able to forgive that person. But if we will keep repeating the same situation with the same person, three, four times in front of the mirror, we will realize that now that situation is no more playing in your mind. And you have released the anger and the negative emotion that was between both of you. Understood? Okay, let's go forward.
Mirror work will help you get all your feelings out. One of my students had a difficult time letting her anger out. Intellectually, she understood, understood her feelings yet she couldn't express them outwardly. When she allowed herself this expression through her mirror work, she was able to scream and call her mother and her alcoholic daughter also of his name. She felt a tremendous weight lift from her when she released her resentment. Later, when her daughter came towards it, the woman couldn't stop hugging her. All this was possible because she had released her repressed anger, making room for love.
Yes, so many, so when you will get like, let's say you are angry with like, try doing this thing today. Go and recall a situation wherein you are really upset with somebody over something. Now instead of going and calling that person and telling everything to that person, take a pillow, take a cushion, sit with that and hit the cushion really hard, first of all, do that. And while you are hitting that cushion, think of all the things because of which you are upset with that person. Of all the reasons, all the negative reasons, you feel like calling them names, you feel like doing anything, do that. Or if not that, stand in front of the mirror and talk to that person and tell each and everything. Like if you even want to, you know, like, take your hands like this and you want to get like angry and show that thing to that person. If that person would have been there in front of you, go ahead and do that. And once you will be done with that, you will actually feel that a weight has been lifted from you. Yeah, let's go forward.
So many people tell me how much happier they are once they release anger toward another person. It is as though a huge burden has been lifted. Go within and know that there is an answer to your anger that you will find it. It is very healing to meditate and visualize the rage flowing freely out of your body. Send love to the person who is the object of your anger and see your love dissolve whatever this harmony there is between you. Be willing to become harmonious, perhaps the anger you feel is reminding you that you are not communicating well with others. By recognizing this, you can correct it. Let's affirm, it is okay to have my feelings. Today I express how I am feeling in positive ways.
Yes, so what is there, what they are trying to tell us is that take a person, take a situation and say whatever you have to first of all, and once you are done with that, send them loving energies. And when you send them loving energies, you will be amazed to see that how the worst of the relationship will also become at least that kind of a relationship wherein you will be able to stand each other. And you suddenly you will feel that, you know, you don't hold that much of negativity for that person. And believe me, we all are attached to, you know, like this invisible etheric cord, all of us with each other. So if I am thinking negative about you automatically, you will always have that kind of a, you know, feeling for me. You will not be very comfortable around me, even if you, you know, we are sitting in the same room and I happen to meet you and you are not having good feelings for me, believe me. My, my body will get to know about it, my soul will get to know about it. So it's that strong, so let's say you already know somebody and there has been a situation which has not been so good. At least try and send them positive energies and forgiveness once you are done doing the thing with the pillow and the mirror. And accept it and, you know, like, feel good about it that today, like affirm it that it's okay to have my feelings, I felt bad about you. It's okay, but today I express how I am feeling in positive ways for the same person after doing what I had to do. Now these are the few exercises which I will be sending in the group, once we are done with the class, but I will at least just, you know, read this thing for you, so I will at least read this thing. Your day eleven mirror work exercise. Find a place with a mirror where you will feel safe and will not be disturbed. Look into your eyes in the mirror, if you are still uncomfortable doing this, then concentrate on your mouth or nose. See yourself and/or the person you believe has wronged you. Remember the moment when you became angry and let yourself feel the anger come through you. Begin to tell this person exactly what you are so angry about, express all the anger you feel, be specific. Now in this exercise particularly, once we will start doing this thing, I will talk about this, you know, the third part. Now in this situation, take that person and pick up one thing at a time, pick up one situation that happened at once. And exactly go ahead and tell that person each and every feeling that you had, why you felt so? What, what made you feel so? What were the words that you spoke and you felt bad about it? Explain them everything, everything, why you are hurt in detail. Okay, once you are done with that and pick up one thing at a time, remember. You may need to do this exercise several time before you truly feel that you have gotten rid of all your anger. You may want to work on one anger issue or several, do what feels right for you, but here because I have done it. So I will suggest that pick up one feeling and go ahead and just write whatever comes in your mind. And you will be amazed to see that it may happen that just after one writing, you will feel like relieved. And don't forget to send them the loving energies after that. Else do it for a couple of times and you will be sorted. And you will, you will be amazed to see there, there are many people who did this thing before. And they even happened to, you know, got calls from people with whom the relationship was so bad. Like many of them expressed it with their partners, the husband, the wife says that I am right, the husband says I am right. And in that glitch, every day they are, they are attending, you know, they tend to have that negative energy between both of them which had been building over the period of time and they were quiet and it just bursted and spoiled the relationship between them. It can happen between boyfriend and boyfriend as well. So if at all you are in such kind of a relationship, try and do this thing, instead of correcting them, go ahead. Take your anger out, tell them everything in front of the mirror, hit them hard, thinking it's them on the pillow. Then forgive them, keep forgiving them. And you will be amazed to see their shift in behavior. Rak, you want to say something? I think then it's by mistake. Okay, Ashman, you may read it, dear.
The power is within you. Oh, one second. The power is within you, your day eleven journaling exercise. Point number one, have you been angry for much of your life? Here are some questions you can journal about to help release this, these habitual angry feelings. Why, why am I choosing to be angry all the time? What am I doing to create situation after situation that angers me? Who am I still punishing? What I am giving out that attracts, attracts in others, they need to irritate me? Point number two, now ask yourself these questions and write down your answers. What do I want? What makes me happy? What can I do to make myself happy? Point number three, think about ways you can create a new space inside you to feel good about yourself. Think about ways you can create optimistic and cheerful patterns and beliefs.
Now these are the prompts that you need to do, okay? And once you will do this thing, you will realize that you will go back to like old times and you will see that, you know, how your layers of, you know, like onion being peeled. And your anger is something that is related to way past, you will be surprised to do it. And what I will suggest is that take one point and repeat it at least for three to four days. Even more if you get the calling and you believe me, you will be a different person. I, I remember in my situation itself, I was very, very upset with one person because of one particular thing that I felt, you know, that that person did wrong with me and I, I mean, I, I'm not very comfortable in explaining what happened, why it happened. But I was for a long period of time, like almost two, two and a half, three years, I was holding that feeling that, you know, that person did such a wrong thing with me and I was extremely upset. And nine months back, I got introduced to mirror work and since then I have been practicing it regularly. And what I felt was that, that issue, that deep rooted issue was not that person, that was something which was related to my childhood. It was that back. And it all happened when I started, you know, just working on that particular point again and again. And every time I used to, you know, use these prompts and used to write it. A different side of story of my life used to pop up. And I used to be like, now why this, now why this, now why this? And gradually I could like, you know, connect all the dots and realize, oh my God, it is not that person. This is something which I have been feeling since my childhood. So once you will start practicing this thing, people, you will yourselves see. And I am open to listen to everything which you people have to share, okay? So if you want to write it to me, do that, whatever, I'm open to it. Okay, yes, Ashman, please.
Yeah, yeah. Your heart, heart thought for day eleven, I deserve to feel good. Life is very simple, we create our experiences by our patterns of thought and feeling. What we believe about ourselves and about life becomes true for us. Thoughts are only words shrunk together, they have no meaning whatsoever. It is we who give meaning to them. We give meaning to them by focusing on the negative messages over and over in our minds.
Okay, so you must have experienced it by now because I think, you know, whosoever is joining here, they have been on a journey. Like even before joining here and some or the other way wherein they are just trying to explore some or the other side of themselves and what universe has to offer. So I'm sure by now you must be, you know, a little mindful in seeing the patterns and you will realize that almost eighty percent of the way we are behaving and the way we react. It is mainly based on how we are thinking about a particular situation. And we keep repeating that situation over and over in our mind until unless it becomes like really difficult and suffocating for us. And then we say that we are upset about this thing because so and so happened. But the fact is that we created that pattern over and over again in our mind and we spoiled it for us. Maybe that situation, situation happened and we felt bad about it and we could have thought about it for a little while. And then we could have released it, we could have channelized it in a different way. But what we do, we think again and again, and then we make situations more negative for us. Try and observe it, try and observe it, whatever I'm talking, try and observe it in yourself. Yes, Ashman.
What we do with our feelings is very important. Are we going to act them, no? Are we going to act them out? Will we punish others, sadness, loneliness, guilt, anger and fear are all normal emotions. But when these feelings take over and become predominant, life can be an emotional battlefield. Through mirror work, self-love and positive affirmations, you can nourish yourself and relieve any of the anxiety you may be feeling at the moment. Do you believe you deserve peace and serenity in your emotional life? Let's affirm, I release the pattern in my consciousness that is creating resistance to my good. I deserve to feel good.
Yes, so this is what the whole mirror work is always about, that, you know, tapping into your inner self and releasing what is not serving us for our highest good and realizing all the patterns and going ahead and taking all of those things for us to make us a better version of ourselves. And putting immense self-love in us so that that is what we can offer to others by practicing more and more of positive affirmations and doing a lot of mirror work. Because self-talk is something that is always very, very, very useful for us. Okay, now we'll do a little meditation for that, I would request you to close your eyes and start taking small, comfortable, deep breath. Close your eyes and breathe in and breathe out. Breathe in and breathe out. Breathe in. Deep within center of your heart. Find a agreement point of brilliantly colored light. In such a color. The very center of your lung. It pulses. It expands until it fills your heart. See this light moving through your body. From the head and the chin, it goes and fingers. Or absolutely glowing with this You are absolutely glowing with this love and your healing energy. Let your whole body vibrate with this light. Feel yourself every breath I open and help. Feel this light and move the body and allowing vibrant health return to it. Let this light begin to radiate out from you in all directions. At your healing energy touches everyone who needs it. What is that you? Your love and light and healing energy who are in need of healing. Let your light move into hospitals and homes and orphanage into prisons into mental hospitals other institutions of despair. Bringing hope, happiness and let it move every home in the city in which you live. Wherever there is pain and suffering, let your love, light and healing energy bring comfort to those. Now you can cup, now I can rub your hands, rub your palms, cup your face and cup your eyes. That's all for today. Thank you so much and I'm gonna send you all the details.